I know we've still got some people in line, but we want to come to order. As you come in, grab a chair and sit up at the back. Want to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming. We welcome the opportunity to sit down and share ideas and information and see if we can't come up with more creative solutions to the problems we're wrestling with. I think everyone's been filling out the public speaking forms at the back. If you want to speak, you need to fill out the form. I've been given a stack of them here. These are on a first-come, first-served basis. That's the way we're going to call you to the podium. And so if you haven't gotten a form filled out and you want to talk, just go back to the table at the back of the room and they'll take care of you. I wanted -- my name is Rob Kelly. I'm your county judge. And this is your commissioner's court here in the middle. Harley Ballou, Precinct 1. Tom Moser, Precinct 2. Jonathan Letts, Precinct 3. Don Harris, Precinct 4. And you'll see we have the members of the Animal Services Department here. And then we have various other -- we have our county attorney here. We have various people that are helping us with this. So you'll see us up here. If you have any questions, we're happy to let you know who these folks are. But with that, I wanted to kind of lay out the format for tonight's workshop so that we don't have any misunderstandings about it. We're going to do a brief overview from the county commissioner's court and the Animal Services Department to kind of talk about how we got to where we are here today. And then after that, we're going to open the podium up, the microphone up, to the public. And we're going to -- we're expecting to have probably at least 90 minutes of opportunity to hear input from the public. The format will be that you come to the -- you'll be called up according to these forms that have already been submitted. We come up one at a time. We've allocated three minutes. That's our court rules is three minutes for public input. And at the end of that, we have a timekeeper will be our -- in fact, she's coming down beside I'll over here with a striped shirt on. She turned around. That's Jackie Doughty, our county clerk. And she will be the timekeeper. And when the time goes off, we respectfully ask you to please stop talking or at least finish your sentence or your thought quickly so that everybody else has a turn. We figure that if everybody, if we're pretty efficient about this, we should be able to accommodate probably 30 or so people tonight. And we're hopeful that we can do that. And so it's important that you not overrun your time because that just means that many more people won't have a chance to tell us what they want us to know. I wanted to point out that we have Aaron Yates and his crew here that are doing the video. Aaron's over here on the side. We want to thank him for videotaping this. He tells me that this will be, I think, what? Uploaded or downloaded, whatever it is, on your site and YouTube. And it will provide one so that we can put it on our website. So this whole meeting should be available for you to view and go back and rewind and see exactly what everybody said and who looks like what, so. Now with that, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the court to give you a brief explanation of why we did what we did, because I know there's a lot of questions about that. But then also to get input from you so that we can hopefully come up with better solutions to these problems. The format will be initially, we're going to hear from our department head, Reagan Givens, who is the head of the Animal Services Department. And then we're going to hear from the commissioners. And the first commissioner that will speak is Jonathan Letts, Commissioner, Precinct 3, because he's the liaison commissioner for animal services. So he is the guy that knows the most about what's going on in animal services on the court. And then we'll go right down the line. We'll start with Precinct 1, Precinct 2, Precinct 4. And then I will wrap up. And at that point, we'll start the public input. And then at the end of the public input, we will adjourn. And we're hoping to get everybody out of here pretty promptly about 8 o'clock. So that's our goal. That's the format. So with that, let me start with Reagan Givens.
Can everybody hear me? Good evening. My name is Reagan Givens. I'm the Director of Animal Services. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to run through some numbers with you guys. Hold closer. So I'm going to run through the pet impounds and surrenders, followed by pet adoptions and rescues. Kind of giving you a little bit of insight into the last three years. Starting in 2017, we had 2,588 impounds at the facility. 717 of those were surrenders. And 1,871 of those were strays. In 2018, we saw 2,063 impounded animals in the facility, 664 surrenders, and 1,399 stray dogs and cats. Let's see here. Then we had, this year in 2019, so far for the first 10 months of the year, we've had 1,995 impounds, 711 surrenders, and 1,284 strays in the first 10 months of 2019. You can go on to the next slide. These are pet adoptions and rescues. In 2000 -- I didn't include the 2017 numbers. These are for the past two years. 2018, we had 562 public adoptions and 302 rescue adoptions. And that totaled out to 864 total adoptions when you add both those up. In 2019, we made a little bit of a switch once we got Nicole Golden as our adoption coordinator. And we started giving rescue organizations first priority whenever it comes to getting these animals out of the facility. So far this year, we've had 348 public adoptions and 758 rescue adoptions, which totals 1,106 for the year so far. That's 242 more than last year. And we still have a couple of months of data to go. So at our department, we have 13 total staff members, including myself. We have a deputy constable who does mostly solid waste. It's Sean Gore. And he is responsible for all the solid waste side of our department. He also helps out a whole lot with the animal control officers and anything they need. Then we have five animal control officers, one adoption coordinator, an office administrator, two full-time kennel techs, and then two part-time kennel techs. And you can see some of the cumulative hours that they work every week. So some of the stuff that we deal with on a daily basis pertains to our facility and what we do, what our job function is. Most of it's in the Health and Safety Code. You've got Chapter 821, which deals with the treatment of impounded animals, disposition of cruelly treated animals, euthanasia of animals, unlawful restraint of a dog. Chapter 822, and I don't have a slide for a few of these, so just bear with me. Chapter 822 is regulation of animals. That gets into attack by dangerous dog, local regulation of dangerous dog, requirements of owners of a dangerous dog, and determination that a dog is dangerous. Chapter 823, which pertains to animal shelters, and that's standards for animal shelters. And then we go to Chapter 826, which there, you've already got it. That is going to deal with our standards for rabies control, rabies vaccinations, registration and restraint of dogs and cats, rabies reports and quarantine, quarantine and impoundment facilities. Then we go to Chapter 828, which is your dog and cat sterilization. It has requirements. Sterilization agreement, sterilization required. And then Chapter 829 is the animal control officer training. And then we also deal with the penal code. Chapter 42, which is mostly going to be what we deal with is 4209 cruelty to livestock animals and 42092 cruelty to non-livestock animals. So those are some of the things that our department's responsible for and what we do on a daily basis.
I'm going to go over first, the reason we're really here is the reasons for the changes we made. And I'll go into more detail on these in a few minutes. But the main reason is the current hours are not workable with our current staff. So we had to make some sort of a change. Staff working conditions is another issue, and then volunteer concerns. I put this up here because this gets into a lot of the issue when I talk about our hours of operation and work and trying to keep, how to staff what we do. We have animal control officers Monday through Sunday. We have two on duty, eight to eight. Monday through Friday, we have an additional one on duty, eight to five. Then they're on call all other times. And then even if one's on call, the other one may be on call. If you just total that up, it's 208 hours. If you look back, remember back to the sheet that Reagan just showed you, there's only 200 hours allocated by law per week for these five employees. So we're already over. We can handle that through scheduling a little bit. But if you look at the very bottom, we have after-hour calls, sick leave, vacation. All of a sudden, when we have someone leave their position, we all of a sudden get into a real problem on being able to staff everything properly. If you go to the next slide. And that comes up with the comp time. And we talked quite a bit about this earlier. But comp time, last year, at the end of the year, we had 1,346 hours left. We had already, Reagan had already used up a lot of that during the year. We have to either give time off or pay that at 1.5 times. So that came up to 2,019 hours of comp time last year. If we didn't pay that off, that would have been the equivalent of one employee, of being done one employee for the year. Average 40 hours a week, 52 weeks is 2,080 hours. That's how the 40-hour-a-week employee works. So we had a problem. We had to fix. We had to figure out how to really cut back on our hours because we don't have the staff to be able to do what we're doing right now. And then we go back a little bit to the interlocal agreement with the city of Kerrville. We started that January 1st of 2018. Eight months into that agreement, we changed our hours of operation significantly because of the same problem. We knew we couldn't do it. We just weren't making ends meet with our staff. We changed it August 1st of 2018 to what we're currently working under. I visited with the city manager and with the mayor several months ago and told them it wasn't working again. We're going to have to do another change of our hours of operation. We cannot afford to keep up this kind of comp time. The other problem we had with our hours of operation, we did last year lunch hours. We decided that we'd be open through lunch. The problem is our employees never got lunch then because we have a very small staff out there. We have one office worker and one adoption coordinator and the two kennel techs. The animal control officers are not there all the time. That was a violation of federal law. We have to give our employees an hour for lunch and two 15-minute breaks. The only way we could do that is if we closed for lunch. Another thing that became a bit of a problem or time-consuming are emails. In 2018, in 2019, this graph will show you the number of emails we've received. These are unique emails. So like if Reagan and I both got the same email, it's only counted once. Number of emails we received, as you can see, it's over 1,500, almost 1,700 in 2018. And this year so far, we've had 2,200 emails. That takes a huge amount of time. A lot of those come to me. I'm not going to answer all those. I try to reply to the people, but they all get referred to Reagan, basically. Reagan then works on them, and he also gets referred on to staff. We are eating up an unbelievable amount of time on emails and open records requests. Well, I'm just saying, that's the reality. So we have to, we, this is a priority over anything else, a lot of these. So the number of emails we're getting has become a problem. I received this year over 1,400 emails from one person. I don't know how people can write that much. I mean, to be honest, I can't answer them all. I try to answer most of them. Other thing is, we talked about staff. And I'll read this. These is, the next three are social media posts. Trash that needs to be sent to a gas chamber. They are not human. If I was in charge of these kinds of people, would be euthanized, not the animals. These things claiming to be human are not. These are possessed demonic entities in human form. I'm not worried about the overpopulation of animals. I'm worried about overpopulation of demons called humans. You no longer deserve this planet, and your little Nazi animal genocide station should be put out of business, along with your income that brings food, you food, to your table. You should never procreate. Your kids don't deserve a life. All records of your existence should be deleted. Your DNA should be put on a rocket and sent to the sun. We take things like this very serious. It is, that is a hateful thing for members of this community to say about our staff. This goes straight to the stress and the, really, the medical conditions that some of y'all were causing our staff. The hateful, and this is not unique. There's a lot of them that we could have put up here. This is one of the worst. But this caused a problem. Our staff was getting worn down. This was day in, day out. They were being attacked on social media by many people in this room right now. Go to the next one. This one is not nearly as bad. With animals, you would think they could have included a few dogs or cats. No time to post animal photos, but time for photo op. Obviously, getting the animals out alive is not anywhere on the priority list. Our employees care a lot about animals. And for you people to say that, or some people, individuals in the room to say that, is uncalled for. Next one. Yep, that secret feral room. We need to figure out a way to get a little tiny hidden camera in that room. Either we pay an employee off to set one up and hide it in there, or somehow one of us gets in there and it would be like a fly on the wall. We would only, we would have video and audio. I would just love to see what's going on in that feral cat room. I mean, this is illegal. This goes into our volunteer policy. We cut back our volunteer policy, possibly or partially, because these are things that this community is saying, we can't trust. We need to have our eyes on the volunteers. We have great volunteers, and it's unfortunate that some people here are ruining it for all the other volunteers that are doing fantastic work. And that's all I have on this part. I have a little more a little bit later on.
I'm kind of curious if the person who wrote that my children don't have the right to a life or deserve a life, is that person in the room tonight? I'd like to see you. I'd like you to stand up and own that. Are you here? Now, folks, how many of you look at us as a group? I'd like to see a show of hands. You look at this as a group or as individuals? I don't want to look at the people here as a group. I look at you as individuals. I don't hold everybody here responsible for this stuff. But it's getting out of hand and it's getting threatening, as a matter of fact. So I know people do that. They have a couple of glasses of wine, they get on social media, and these things happen. I know what happens. But it's uncalled for. And nothing gets done when we talk to each other that way. So I would remind everyone tonight that cooler heads should prevail. And do we have any business owners here? Any of you business owners? Please show me your hands. All right, business owners. When you have a vol, if you have a new employee, you have to keep an eye on them, don't you? You have to train them. You have to help them. It's time-consuming. You're investing in them. The same amount of energy goes into a volunteer. Plus, you have to really kind of babysit them. And you have to protect them. And the idea that we can just open the doors to any volunteer and they come in because they're adults and they're 50 years old, or they're 30 years old, or whatever age, and that they're going to be responsible, we cannot make that assumption, nor can you and your business. I want to say also that we are tasked with protecting the public first, not adopting out dogs or cats or anything else. The first task of the Kerr County Animal Control is to make sure that you are safe from rabid animals. We also make sure that animals are not treated cruelly. That's part of it, too. Nobody wants to see that happen to an animal. I'll make a confession to you tonight. When I was a teenage boy, me and my buddies let all the dogs out of the dog pound. We thought that was going to be good, but I don't know how many of them got hit by cars. They died from mange. Ranchers shot them. I don't know what happened to them. It sounded good, but I didn't take any real responsibility for what happened to them later. The real answer is for us to spay and neuter our pets and to make sure that we inform our neighbors of the same. And if you really want to see change, you got to do it yourself. You can't keep pointing fingers. We have to have somebody that'll take the bull by the horn and go and start a nonprofit and see to it that these animals are taken care of because Kerr County is not an adoption agency. That is not the job of the county for any animal. Thank you.
Animals are loved dearly by a lot of people. Animals are not liked by some people. And it's almost an extreme. It's almost a binary thing. You either like them or you don't like them. And I'm not saying either is correct, all right? I happen to love animals. I have animals. I've adopted a lot of them from the Humane Society, from the animal shelter, from Kerr County, from Calo. So, but as I sit here as a county commissioner, I look at five different things. And so what I look for is how do we balance this between those people that think are on one end of the spectrum or at the other end of the spectrum? And there's five things that I've considered in coming up with what Commissioner Letts showed a while ago of what we've done. And that is, number one, by law, we have to take rabies control seriously. We're obligated to do that. Number one. Number two, we have to consider the animals and the welfare of the animals. We have to consider the welfare of the employees. We have to consider the budget. And the other thing that we have to consider is an interlocal agreement that we have with the city. It took us a long time to get there. I think people are happy with it, okay? But the city provides the library, county provides animal services. And with that, we started that getting into details of hours that libraries are going to be open, hours that the animal control was going to be open for adoption and so forth. We said, let's stop. City, you take care of operating the library. We'll take care of operating animal services. So that's where we are. If I had, if I could be king for a day, the one thing that I would hope for is that there's some not-for-profit organization that could be formed that would take care of all animal adoptions, get the county out of it, keep it for the time required by law, and then have somebody else do that. We don't need to be in that business. And I think there, people can expend their revenues, their resources to help an adoption agency like that. So that's where I come down on this.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out. We got a bumper crowd in here. And I'm going to be brief because I want to hear from y'all. I want to say that I do agree with both Commissioner Moser and Commissioner Ballou. And I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't like animals. There's a lot of passion here. I think if we direct it in the right way, we can all come to a solution that suits everybody. I think the nonprofit is a way of achieving that. And I want to see something done or get something initiated, I hope, from some of y'all, and where everybody wins. But again, I want to hear from y'all, so I'm going to be brief. Hand it back to the judge.
Hold on, stand up so you can see me. We really do appreciate you coming out here tonight. We all know we have a problem. And we're trying to do the best we can. And I know that a lot of people in this room were upset by the decision that we made. We've just scratched the surface. But we had a crisis, a personnel crisis that we had to deal with, and it was very, very real. You see our animal control officers here? These are people. They're your neighbors, friends. They go to work every day just like you do. They expect to make a living and support their family. And when I heard that one of these people, and they're going to remain anonymous because you don't need to know which one it was, took their young child, pre-k child, to the gas station to get gas, and they were shouted as murderers in front of their children at the gas station. And they kept shouting murderer, murderer. That's unacceptable. That's a working environment that we cannot allow to continue. And the truth of the matter is that for all the right reasons, control of the animal control facility, of the animal services shelter, got away from us. It just somehow vaporized. We lost control of it. And so what we were trying to do was to, it's like when you reboot your computer. We got to reset. We got to get back to the basics and do what we're supposed to do. And what you're going to hear, the theme recurring throughout the coming weeks and months, is we have to do animal services and animal control according to what is mandated for the county to do. And it doesn't have all these bells and whistles. We love the bells and whistles. We got distracted with that. The rescues, the adoptions, it's all great. They're aspirational. We want to do it, too. But we don't want to do it on the backs of the taxpayers because that's not the mandate that we're supposed to do. And so in order to try to get it back, what we did was, we're going to take control of our facility back. And we're going to give people lunch. We're going to comply with federal law. And we're going to try to put, we're going to try to corral, to rope in somehow, all of this venom out there, this poison, that somehow we're the Antichrist. We're in this with you. We're trying to solve this problem with you. And so as upset as you are with us, and we're here to listen to you, we want to listen to you, we're really here to try to find out how are we going to solve this problem? Because where we are right now is we need to have control over our volunteer program. We can't have spies in there. We can't have people putting in cameras and mics, hidden mics. Come on. Espionage, you know, at the county level. We're the county. Good grief, we're in this thing together. And so that's why we wanted to come here tonight, and we are really excited about hearing from you. And we may, we may not agree on things, but at the end of the day, you're my neighbors and you're my friends. And we're going to live here together. And we're going to make this work. We're just going to have to figure out how we're going to do it. And so with that, I want to open the floor up. And our first speaker tonight is Jim Sandy. If you'd come forward, Jim's got a prepared remarks for us. Thank you for coming, Jim. You may proceed. Jackie, you got the time in the bag? Okay. You see that little switch up there on the top? Push it up.
This is not Kevin.
Just tap it and make sure we got it.
Okay, can you hear me?
And keep, talk a little bit closer to it so everybody can hear you.
I usually speak pretty loud. I didn't think I'd. Okay, my name is Jim Sandy. My address is 3940 Oak Park Drive in Kerrville. And first, I'd like to thank the court for expressing their point of view. And tonight, I will speak about the Kerr County Animal Services Shelter hours on Saturday. On October 15, KCAS Director Givens presented a comprehensive report to the court in executive session. The commissioner's court then voted in open session to close the shelter on Saturdays. In my opinion, this decision is not in the best interest of the public or the animals. I recommend that the court immediately reopen the shelter on Saturdays to a minimum four hours. On October 21, the court released a statement providing a few of the numbers that formed a basis for their decision. The primary reason cited for closing on Saturdays was the perception of low public utilization of Saturday hours as measured by public adoptions. Looking at the adoption data that was used by the court, I can see how the court came to that perception. Unfortunately, the numbers that were used are flawed and misleading. A proper analysis of the adoption data leads to the opposite conclusion. Specifically, as measured by public adoption rate, the public utilization of Saturday hours was high. Per the October 21 statement, the data used by the court cited that 333 adoptions occurred on Saturday out of a total of 1,000 adoptions during the first nine months of 2019. This led the court to conclude that Saturday accounted for only 3% of the total adoptions. However, this is misleading because the 1,000 total adoptions included both rescue adoptions as well as public adoptions, whereas the 33 adoptions on Saturday included only public adoptions. Thus, apples were being compared to oranges. To compare apples to apples, we should look at public adoptions by itself. When we do this, we see that the 33 public adoptions occurred on Saturday out of a total of 314 public adoptions. Now we see that Saturday accounted for 10% of the public adoptions, significantly more than the 3% that the court was led to believe. The data used by the court also failed to express public adoptions as an hourly rate. It is important to do this to counter the fact that the shelter was open for only two hours on Saturday, while it was open for an average of 7.4 hours per weekday. It is not fair not fair, for example, to compare the number of adoptions during two hours on Saturday with the number of adoptions during nine hours on Monday. The best approach is to compare the hourly public adoption rates for each day of the week. When this is done, Saturday is seen to have the highest adoption rate. In fact, the adoption rate on Saturday is double the average adoption rate during the weekdays. With such a high level of public utilization of shelter hours on Saturday, the court should have increased the number of hours on Saturday and reduce the number of hours during weekdays if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The next speaker is Tyra Thompson-Lux. Did I say your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Tyra Thompson-Lux. I'm a private citizen who was volunteering at Kerr County Animal Services on Saturdays but can no longer volunteer since the shelter is now closed to the public on Saturdays. I am unable to volunteer during the week due to the new rule that has been implemented, that volunteers are now required to request to volunteer three working days in advance because of my unpredictable work schedule and hectic. I was volunteering at Kerr County Animal Services for the sole purpose of helping to give these homeless animals a better quality of life, to get them out of their cages even just briefly, where they can be confined alone for several days and nights at a time without being let out for exercise or socialization. As a private citizen speaking, my personal goal is to ultimately see Kerrville and Kerr County become a no-kill city, where homeless animals are adopted as opposed to being put to death in a cold, frightening shelter and dumped into the landfill, which has been the standard mode of operation for decades. It is fact that these are alive beings who feel fear and pain the same way we do. My opinion is that public outcry will help Kerrville to become no-kill. Every voice counts. So please, call or email or write our county commissioners, Judge Rob Kelly, our city council members, and our mayor, Bill Blackburn. These are the people who make these decisions. Please tell them we want Kerrville and Kerr County to become a pet-friendly and compassionate no-kill city. Even if we can do only just a little something to improve another person's or animal's life, we've made a difference as opposed to doing nothing. Because if a lot of people would do only a little something for someone else, this would add up to significant changes in our community and better our communities and our world. The Dalai Lama, whose personage has always been a symbol of unification and peace, was known to have said, "If we find we cannot help others, the least we can do is desist from harming them." God bless you all, and thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker for me I have here is Paula Reed.
I'm Paula Reed, 214 Loma Vista, Kerrville, Texas. Good evening, gentlemen, women. I have a personal transportation service. And as such, I volunteer services to pick up and transport KCAS animals to area rescues. I foster KCAS animals. I volunteer weekly at the Humane Society, and I am a Hill Country animal advocate. One of the changes we rallied hard for last year was for KCAS to open on Saturdays. This was to be for the welfare of the animals, availability for working pet owners to reclaim their pets, for families to spend time with animals to adopt, and for students to be able to volunteer and interact with the animals. I believe that being opened on Saturdays produced these and more positive results for KCAS. There were increases in the direct adoptions by the public, many due to the flea treatments, bathing, and exercising of animals done by the Saturday volunteers. There were increases in indirect adoptions by rescues. Many of these due to the availability of Saturday pickup times for the transporting of the animals to the area rescues. Opening on Saturdays also created more public exposure, which resulted in increased donations. There was a huge increase in goodwill to the community. On Saturdays, KCAS had adults and students volunteering to clean up the facility, bathe, exercise, and interact with the animals to help socialize them. On Saturdays, families did have more time to assess the animals for adoptions. All of this created a more social and positive environment at KCAS. Along with the positive increases, there was also an effective decrease in animal euthanizations. This created less labor and cost for KCAS. I ask you, where did the director of KCAS allocate these savings? Apparently, not to two hours on Saturdays. KCAS's new policy leaves animals enclosed in confined areas for 63 hours on a regular basis, which does not include holiday closures, which is an additional 24 hours. You say KCAS is all about rabies control. Do your taxpayers know that you don't even give rabies shots to the animals adopted out? If you check Kerr County records, you will find that the need for rabies control is minimal, while the need for animal services is great. You call yourself animal services, yet you place the burden of rabies shots, spaying, or neutering the animals on the adopter. This mindset has to be changed to decrease animal control in Kerr County. The director of KCAS, along with the liaison commissioner, should establish policies to reflect the welfare of the animals, accommodate the working people, and benefit the taxpayer of Kerr County. This is where our tax money should be allocated, not to killing the animals and throwing them away like trash. I understand the need for volunteer scheduling, but a three-day prior notice is absurd. KCAS's new volunteer policy requires two trips to the facility, one to sign up and one to actually volunteer. Even if Saturdays are restored, this burden to sign up in advance will still impact the students and the working people of Kerr County, who cannot get there during the week. This is a total disregard for all volunteers offering their valuable time and assistance. This policy only creates negative results. So I ask why? Why does KCAS want such an outrageous policy that only proposes to keep the volunteers out? Maybe the KCAS director needs to be, as Judge Kelly says, schooled on animal welfare, the appreciation and value of volunteers, and common courtesy to the residents of Kerr County, or be replaced. The information you receive from the director should reflect not just negative, but also the positive improvements that have been made. The director should also be able to devise a plan for continued improvements to be implemented at KCAS for the benefit of the animals, pet owners, working people, and taxpayers of Kerr County. We are here today to ask that you reinstate Saturdays to be open for a minimum of four hours. We ask that you make the weekday hours adjustments simple and consistent for the residents and working people of Kerr County. We are also here to ask that you schedule no surrenders on Saturdays, Monday through Friday only. Other area shelters schedule all their surrenders. KCAS needs renewed and updated policies implemented that will be positive for the animals and citizens of Kerr County. You have the ability to make this happen, and we are here to ask that you do it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
That's not part of our rules, please. We don't have surrender rules here. The next speaker is Brenda Hughes.
Hello, my name is Brenda Hughes. I live at 709 Galbraith Avenue. Commissioners, I am addressing you tonight as a citizen, a taxpayer, an animal advocate, and a volunteer who has donated hundreds of hours to our community over the last 26 years. I've also served on various city and county boards as a CASA volunteer and as a board member for Hill Country CASA. Volunteers are gifts to the community. They serve without compensation, without recognition, and most certainly, without any expectation of appreciation by the commissioners or KCAS. Volunteers have no ulterior motive for their selfless service to the county and the animals. They simply volunteer their time, resources, and energy because they feel it's the right thing to do. You may be unfamiliar with the services they provide, so here are just a few examples of what they do. Behavior evaluations, rescue videos, assist adopters, clean kennels and litter boxes, bathe and feed the animals, transport, locate owners of lost pets, communicate with rescues, publicity and signage, organize storage areas, laundry, disinfect the facility, and they even feed staff on Saturdays. What a slap in the face for volunteers to be told they must give a three-day notice before volunteering at the KCAS facility. Whose bright idea was it to close the doors on the one day most volunteers can serve? This gives the perception that volunteers are not welcome there, that KCAS wants adequate notice to make sure nothing inappropriate can be reported. Animals in the care of KCAS don't deserve, nor are they important enough for human contact. Whether accurate or not, this is the perception. In the absence of any policy, the feeling is simply that volunteers ask questions that no one wants to answer. The perception is KCAS doesn't want volunteers in their business. Commissioners, it's time. Time to arrange schedules at the KCAS facility for the betterment of Kerrville's lost, neglected, and abused pets. Time to recognize that all lives matter, and no life deserves to be discarded in our landfill like trash. Time for the county shelter hours to be convenient for the taxpayer. Time to make Saturday hours part of the job requirement for hiring KCAS personnel. Time to step beyond what has always been done and focus on what needs to be done based on feedback from your constituents. Time to put real policies in place that are transparent and don't allow for perceptions. Policies that are based on ethical, responsible, and rational oversight by our elected officials. Thank you.
I think I can say this name. Anka Leitner.
Hello. My name is Anka Leitner. I live in Ingram, Texas. I'll make it real brief since most of it was addressed. But I think the most important thing is that KCAS would be open on Saturdays again, where actually, most people are not working. The average person works Monday through Friday. So if somebody wants to volunteer, adopt animals, do whatever, it's going to be on Saturdays. In my personal opinion, I think Kerr County outgrew our animal service. We don't have enough officers. And I'm sure that any other department in Kerr County that is in need of staff because of the growth of the county would get additional employees to help them out, to do a better job. And therefore, I think there should be resources found, that we can have more staff and more animal control officers to actually make it possible for the shelter to be open on Saturdays again and address all other issues that are concerning that. Thank you.
Tammy Baumann.
I'm going to turn this around because my speech is actually for you all. Some of you may know me. I'm a full-time police sergeant with LAPD. I'm still driving a black and white. I am from Texas. I have a family house here, and I came here to help. In 2015, I was made aware of a lot of things that were going on in Texas. I went down to Eagle Pass. I went to Uvalde. And I wanted to help in Kerrville because this is where I pay taxes. Sorry. I started working with the shelter with a different staff at that time. And I can tell you this, that Kerrville has a problem, and it's not the shelter. The problem is, you had, let's see, 664 surrendered dogs and cats in 2018. That means 664 animals were brought into that shelter by your community, our community. This year so far, 711 have been brought in. That's unheard of, okay? I just went down to Edinburgh. They have 150 dogs coming in a day at that shelter, a day. And guess what? They're all going out to rescues. They're hardly killing any dogs. But here's the difference between the two places. They don't have a good system. Kerrville has a good system. You have Kathleen Kalu. You have Freeman Fritz. You don't need a new nonprofit. You have your nonprofits. You need to spay and neuter in the community, and you need to help people keep their pets. And that's what we do in California. I run a nonprofit out there called Ghetto Rescue, and I brought it here, and it's called Loving Texas Pet Assistance. We help people keep their pets by paying for surgeries, buying kennels, helping them make them ESA dogs. We help them pay their deposit if the landlord wants a deposit, and that's what we do. We help those pets not even come in the front door. So what I see is, the problem is in the community. So we got a donated mobile spay hospital last year. Somebody gave it to me. They like what we do. They gave me this mobile spay hospital. So I came to Kerrville. It's parked here. And guess what? I can't even run it because I can't get $5 from the community, and it's your problem. So I put $1,000 of my own money in, and I brought a vet from California, and we spayed, I don't know, 30 dogs last week or last month. I don't know what it was. I'm not asking for money. I'm saying, you got a great solution here. Your problem is in the community. This is hard work, what I do. I have to package up the surgery packs. I have to sterilize them. I have to get volunteers to come in to help clean up. I have to fly the vet from California because I can't get a vet in Texas to donate a day. But it'll come. You all are paying vets for your animals? Ask your vet to donate one day, two hours. We can spay 50 cats. The next vet I'm flying out here, he can, did you say I was wrong? Okay, the vets, then I would love, then have them come on. Because here's the other thing. The vets have to be able to spay and crank them out. 50 cats, 40 cats, we can do in about six hours if we have a fast vet. Now, if you know a vet, send him our way. Because right now, we're not getting a lot of... Loving Texas Pet Assistance, we're on Instagram and Facebook. So I'm here to help. I'm here. What I learned a long time ago is you can rescue all the dogs. But if you don't have a solution for the problem, which is the spay-neuter and the community, we're not going to build Spamall because some people aren't going to want their dog spayed. But I can tell you, I'm very convincing. And we literally, in south-central Los Angeles, go door-to-door, door-to-door, and talk to these people. And all you great people here, because you're passionate, can be part of going door-to-door, that community outreach. Some of you ladies are working your butts off. And I can tell you, too, I've had many shelter staff, shelter in Carson, the guy that put the dogs to sleep told me, he has to go home and talk to God every night. And the picture that they put up that said they had time to take pictures with the animals and not, or they had time to take a picture but not with the animals. I flew in from Texas that day. I mean, I flew in from California to Texas that day, and I went over to the shelter, and I asked them to pose for a picture with me because I was trying to show that they're people, too. And it was me and them, and that was the post put up. And I was like, I spent my money to come back here because I'm trying to give them a little support because their job's shitty. Sorry, it is. And this is supposed to be a community where they go to church and all this, and I'm seeing stuff like this? That's just mean. So I get it. I don't think dogs should be put to sleep. And I think they should be open on Saturdays. it. I don't think dogs should be put to sleep, and I think they should be open on Saturdays, but it doesn't matter because you can take out 500 dogs, and 500 more are coming in. The numbers, these are people bringing these dogs in. I'm here to help, but I'm going down to Edinburgh. I'm going to Uvalde, and I'm going to Eagle Pass. I'd like to work here. You have some awesome volunteers that come in all the time and help, passionate people. So, you know, if anybody wants to talk to us, we're going to set up a volunteer day. I'm not here to preach what I do. I'm here to be part of your solution. I'm here to help because I'm from here. So I brought the van here, but all I see is, it's not so nice. And I operate differently. We're nice, and we're kind. We're kind to poor people. We're kind to rich people, and we don't care. We want to help them keep their animal and get it spayed in the process. Thank God, I don't know the Fitches, I don't know if they're here, and the Bernstein's, they called. They're going to sponsor a day of spay for us so that we don't have to keep pulling our money from California. They're going to give us some Texas money to do this, so thank you. So anyway.
The next speaker I have here is Cindy McLean.
All right, I'm short. Is that good? All right. I don't like doing this, but here we go. And I say that because I'm very reserved about speaking to people. But anyway, my name is Cindy McLean, and I live at 315 Rock Ridge in Kerrville, in the county. And three years ago, when my family and I moved here, we saw so many online notices about, "I've lost my pet. I've lost my dog. I've lost my cat." And it was, you know, epidemic for us, so I couldn't sit idly and just watch that happen. So I started helping reunite dogs. Little ones would even just come up to my house and ended up searching for families and things. And I was, you know, it grew into, it's not something that I wasn't born with. I was born with that passion to help the helpless, but along with a lot of, whole lot of people out here, concerned citizens, I help rescue and foster and adopt and locate new families for the ones that families don't step back up, the ones that abandon them. And I help pay for vaccinations and spay-neuter bills and transport animals to rescue facilities and vet clinics. And I do it all because there's so many abandoned pets here in this county, and it's a really bad epidemic. And anyway, but I stand before you and this large group out here of concerned citizens because we are willing to contribute time, money, and effort, and we're asking that you would consider opening up that Saturday because that's where there is a lot of success that's happening. I know it's not easy for y'all with your schedules and your lives and things like that, but it helps the animals, and ultimately it is a very beneficial thing, and we're all behind it because we do want to help the helpless animals. Anyway, so I close with two quotes. Don't get mad at me, but I have two quotes for you. On February the 14th, nine months ago, Judge Kelly said, at a Commissioner's Court meeting, he said, "When your elected officials won't even talk to you before they vote, there's something wrong with that, and that's not good." That was quote and end quote. Excuse me, I'm not good at this. But then 14 months ago, there was an article in the Kerrville Daily Times on September 26, 2018. Judith Pana Baker, I believe her name is, she interviewed Dr. Director Reagan-Givens, and his quote was, "Additionally, are always welcome at KCAS. I want to stress how important volunteers are, and we have quite a few of them. We have an open-door policy when it comes to volunteering. Don't wait to be invited. Just come on in," end quote. Thank you for your time.
We've been going almost an hour. If anyone wants to take a break, we can break for about five or 10 minutes and come back and finish. We've got, I think, probably 10 or 12 more speakers. Give people time to fill out more forms if you want to speak. So why don't we take about a five-minute break, and we'll come back at 7 o'clock sharp? Before we start back up, I need to apologize. We were supposed to talk about nonprofits. It's on the agenda. We didn't get to it. We're going to do it later after the input. So just hang around, and we'll talk about that, too. But back to the input from the public. The next speaker is Becky Bab.
Can you see me over this thing? Hi, my name is Becky Bab, and I live on 611 Tanglewood Lane, Kerrville, Texas. I am a homeowner, a mother, and an active member of the Hill Country Animal Advocates Group in Kerr County. My daughter Lacey, who is with me today, and I have volunteered at KCAS every Saturday for the last year. We truly cherished our time we had working together with the animals, and I can count on one hand the number of Saturdays we were unable to come volunteer. We have walked and washed the dogs, socialized the cats, picked up trash and poop, helped clean kennels, helped with transports, networked the animals to increase their chances of getting adopted, and even brought staff breakfasts to thank them for their hard work every day. There is no job that we have not been willing to do when asked and have followed all the rules while volunteering. We have spent over 500 hours in the last year dedicating our time and money to help the animals have a better quality of life while they are in the care of KCAS. I have been involved in some capacity of animal rescue and rehabilitation of animals since I was a child. The new shelter hours and volunteer policy has made it impossible for my daughter and I to make the shelter, make it to the shelter and volunteer a time. I cannot express enough how important it is for the animals' mental health at KCAS that they are walked and socialized regularly. Without regular volunteers like us, this does not happen, which puts the healthy animals at risk of developing negative behaviors. The stress of a shelter environment causes a dog to alter its behavior in order to cope. The dogs spend the majority of their time alone. Their day-to-day is in a cold, loud, and unfamiliar place. I ask you all to consider how you would react if you were abruptly put into a prison and forced in solitary confinement. How would you react in a harsh new environment? Studies have shown even humans of the soundest minds do not respond well to isolation. Why would we expect animals to behave any differently? There are some times where an animal is frightened or anxious and is labeled as aggressive, and which can prevent the animal from being adopted. Volunteers like myself with experience are a huge help when there is a dog that needs more attention than the staff at KCAS are able to give at that time. The shelter closing on Saturdays and the new volunteer protocol was not in the best interest of the animals in Kerr County. Closing on a day with the highest number of adoptions per hour does not make sense. The shelter should be open on Saturdays, and the volunteer policy should be shut up, set up to make it easier for the community to help instead of making it harder. My suggestion is to close on Sundays and Mondays and to have a volunteer list of approved volunteers that have gone through an orientation that can come and volunteer throughout any hours that KCAS is open for operation, and assign a volunteer to help with part of that orientation to take the extra job duties off of the staff. Thank you for your time, and thank you for hearing the community.
Lacey Dries.
Hi, my name is Lacey Dries. I live at 611 Tanglewood Lane. I would like to thank you all tonight for listening to the community's concerns regarding the changes to the hours and volunteer policies at KCAS. When my mom told me about the changes, I was heartbroken. Seeing the joy and the smiles on those dogs' faces was my favorite part about the weekend. The new shelter hours make it difficult for students like me to volunteer at the shelter. Saturdays helped me with being helpful, caring, and considerate about people and animals. I was also able to show people the dogs and cats at KCAS are good with children, which helps their chances of getting adopted. I know my mom's experience with rehabilitating and working with scared animals also provided KCAS extra support. I have learned how important it is for animals to be regularly socialized by watching my mom. I ask you, please reopen on Saturdays and make it easier for people like me to volunteer. Closing on Sunday plus Monday, plus opening on Saturdays would make it easier for students like me to volunteer for families to reclaim their animals. Thank you for your time.
Karen Guerrero.
Good evening. I'm Karen Guerrero. I'm a Kerr County resident and live at 307 Lakewood in Kerrville. I serve as the City of Kerrville's representative on the Kerr County Animal Services Advisory Board. I thank you for providing this opportunity for public input tonight, and I appreciate everyone that's come here and support. I volunteered with KCAS on and off for six years and under three different directors. I've seen KCAS experience many challenges and recently many triumphs. In October 2018, Kerr County Commissioners, as a result of a public plea, made positive changes at KCAS, including opening KCAS for two hours on Saturday and at lunch to allow more access for working residents, busy families, adopters, and volunteers. They also hired an adoption coordinator. Those changes resulted in many successes. By mid-October 2019, the live release rate of impounded cats and dogs was at 75% compared to 50% in 2018, despite a 16% intake, increase, of owner surrenders. KCAS also saw its most successful annual rabies drive fueled by publicity and dedicated volunteers working with the adoption coordinator. Between March and October 2019, almost 600 visitors passed through the shelter doors. 172 of those were volunteers. 122 of those were actually volunteers on Saturday. Remarkably, for the first time in eight years, KCAS was completely empty of impounded cats and dogs. It was a true victory. Something was really, really going right, and Saturday hours played a big role in that. In fact, Director Givens, during that time, commented that the shelter was at its very best. Saturdays saw volunteers, Junior Service Guild members, church groups, and families getting service hours. Saturdays brought other volunteers, other rescue organizations like Loving Texas Pet Assistance to give microchips and flea medications to families that came in. Saturday allowed for dogs to get out and exercise that would otherwise be confined to kennels for 63 hours straight, Friday at 5 to Monday at 8. Saturday allows children an escape from video games and cellphones and have hands-on educational experience about the life of a shelter, the life of a shelter pet, learn compassion, and the importance of being a responsible pet owner. Seven out of 13 county shelters of the same size as our community are open on Saturday for a minimum of four hours. As we move into the holidays, the busiest time nationwide for pet adoptions and community shelter donations, please consider opening KCAS for a minimum of four hours on Saturday. Four hours allows enough time for pet adoptions to make responsible, pet adopters to make responsible decisions and reduce the return rate, saving taxpayer money. The future holds a bond election involving the building of a new KCAS facility. By the show of support tonight, KCAS is in the spotlight, and it's, KCAS is time to shine. Let's get the wheel back on the wagon and get back on the path to success, and let the taxpayers of Kerr County know you are listening. Thank you.
I think I can read it. Is it Catherine Berniston?
So my husband told me I should have notes, but I said, "No, no, I don't need to, I can just speak from the heart." And now I will say in public, "You're right." Everybody else has a prepared speech, but honestly, I just, I really do want to speak from the heart, and I kind of want to turn this around. I just, I really feel like, first of all, everybody here loves animals, so I love you guys. But I do feel like somebody needs to speak up for these people back here. I have had the wonderful opportunity to volunteer at this shelter for over seven years now. My girls, when they still lived here, started bark in the park, and for two years, we spent every Saturday taking dogs to the park, and it was fabulous. And so over the past seven years, I've really gotten to know, pretty much, some of them have left, but I can say I know everyone behind me, and I just really think it's important with all of this compassion that's in this room, and I think some amazing things have happened, but I do really want to say that as someone who feels like all of the animals who end up at the shelter, people let them down, right? The shelter would not exist. It'd be so fabulous if everybody had to go find another job because everybody in Kerrville felt like all of us, like if only the whole town of Kerrville was like us. Nobody in this room would ever, you know, everybody's got their dogs spayed and neutered, I'm sure, in here. Everybody's got their dogs either chipped or tagged. When you leave town, if you leave it with somebody, and it gets loose, and Nicole calls and says, "Hey, your dog's turned up," and the person says, "Oh, so-and-so was supposed to keep them," and she's like, "Okay, could they come get them?" And then nobody comes. And, you know, and we're all, I mean, I just, it baffles me. But I just want you all to know that I had the opportunity to work at this shelter as a volunteer, as a warm body, while Nicole had, like, gone for three years without a vacation because she's so compassionate about her job and worries when she's not there. She wants to be there. So I got to go volunteer for four weeks. I was there from 8 to 5, and I just, I cannot even tell you how different it is to be there from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00, as opposed to, and I thought I kind of had a handle on what was going on at the shelter because we would, I would go a lot, I mean, and spend hours up there, but the gamut of emotions when you're there from 8:00 until 5:00, and at about noon, you're thinking, "Things are looking good," you know, "All of the Hill Country Animal Advocates have taken five out, and, you know, Humane Society's taken three." And then all of a sudden, you know, somebody calls and says, "Well, this little old lady has died. She's been feeding 42 cats, and come get them." And so all of these guys have to go rush out, and literally, I'm not exaggerating, it was 42 cats. And, you know, meanwhile, the friendly room has already filled up, and these 42 cats come in, and Nicole has already put out a plea to the community, "Guys, the friendly room's filled up. We need help. We need help." And people came in. It was great. And Eddie and Ray, I mean, we'd look at cars driving up, and I was just saying a prayer, "Please, God, let this be somebody coming to get a cat and not bringing another one in." And then, of course, it's somebody bringing another one in. It's a surrender. You know, my mom's going, my grandmother's going into the nursing home. We're not going to tell her, but here's her cat. You know, it's just, it would literally, I would go home and just cry. But here's the deal, you know, there was a light at the end of the tunnel. I knew I was only doing this for a few weeks. These guys, they have to do it every day. There's no end in sight. And just seeing those emails up there literally made me want to throw up. And I will say, somebody's already mentioned the story about, and I will say, I know who that person is. He's a Marine. He did multiple tours of duty. He's a veteran. He served our country. And yes, he was at a gas station still in uniform with his cute little kids in the car, and someone got in his face, called him a murderer, a killer, "How do you sleep at night?" And his precious little kids are seeing this. And I don't know how you ever unsee that or unhear it. And for days, they cried and said, "Daddy, why would that person call you a killer?" And I'm sorry, as much as I want to save dogs and cats, it's, that, it's, it's too far, you know? I mean, it's, these are the people who, when they have been abandoned by their owners, and they leave the dirty work to them, okay? Their dog's too old. For whatever reason, they, their dog, their cat ends up at the shelter. I know these guys' hearts. There is not one person back here who does not love animals. And I have seen them with tears in their eyes when we are full at this shelter, and Freeman Fritz is full, Humane Society's full, the rescues are full, all the fosters are full. I have, I'm not supposed to announce, well, I can't. I'm not supposed to say how many fosters we've had, but I can't take anymore home. And the look on their faces when they know we have to euthanize. And so just if anybody thinks that this is easy for them, I'm telling you right now, you're wrong. And the last thing, and this is just when I realized, okay, I have to, I have to speak up for them, is somebody who works her tail off day in, day out, saves countless lives, was at HEB. was at HEB, still in uniform, and someone saw her hat that she worked at the shelter. They came up to her in Kerr, in HEB, called her a killer, said, "How can you sleep at night? How do you live with yourself?" And then, they spit in her face. Actually spit in her face. When I told my friend, who's a police officer, she said they should have been arrested. Then, other people got involved, and it, she got scared. You know, it became a situation where people got in her face, and, and, you know, guys, these are the people who, when their owners have abandoned them and they, they do have to be put to sleep, these are the people who, they're the last people that these dogs and cats get to see. And until Kerrville changes and we stop having this problem, I want people at this shelter who are compassionate and love these animals and cry when they have to do this versus people who don't care. So I just, I just think it's really important for, just when people are posting, and the language we use is so important, and, you know, to say, "They killed, you know, they killed somebody." Well, no, the person who brought that dog in and surrendered it, killed it. They're just, they're just leaving the dirty work to these guys, so.
I'm Susie Purcell, 204 River Hill Boulevard. I'm a member of HCAA, new to Texas, lived overseas my, almost my whole life, so, and I am an animal lover. I have fostered, I have adopted, more than I should. But our goal is to move from where we are today with a kill shelter to a no-kill Kerr County policy and shelter system, supported by the appropriate staffing and resources. We believe the recent public poll overwhelmingly supports this goal. We need elected leadership that acknowledges the electorate's wishes, supports that goal with action, a concrete plan, and enthusiastic forward momentum. No more endless meetings, not secret closed-door decision-making, not patronizing schooling of the citizens on how government works. I've attended meetings. And no more retroactive justifications of secret decision-making. We know this is a journey, not an on-off instant fix, but we're eager to begin, impatient for progress, not going backwards to last year's kill processes. And we're willing to help organize staff, volunteers for now, and resource solutions, appropriate ballot measures to pay for a no-kill Kerr County shelter. Over the last year, volunteers and rescues have given tirelessly of their time and resources to assist animal services with the surrenders, estrays, and homeless animals at Kerr County Animal Services. They have advertised, transported, fostered, held events, and these are just a few ways of giving. If employees have felt threatened, maybe they're seeing how hardworking the volunteers have been. These are examples that the volunteers are setting. Although not a preferred solution, and I didn't want to have to go this route, but based on a poll taken by the Kerrville Daily Times on this issue being discussed tonight, and I've talked about this a lot over the last month, I'm willing to pursue an appropriate recall action if Kerr County leadership stubbornly remains so out of touch with the desires of Kerr County citizens. Kerr County needs forethinking leadership now, today. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ingrid Culbeth.
Everything's been gone over that I had in my speech, which was mainly the Saturday hours, and I can't imagine someone thinking that someone who worked so hard during the week from 8:00 to 5:00 is going to get off work on a Tuesday or a Thursday, run home, grab the kids, and get out to the shelter by 6:00. With the traffic that we have, it's just impossible. But anyway, and given that this whole situation is due to monetary concerns, in other words, costs, to the county for the overtime hours of the staff, I was quoting a Commissioner in an October 18th article. He says, "We're pushing as far as we can with the budget and the resources we have." And I also read an article in October 24th issue of the Kerrville Times that when the animal shelter, Kerr County Animal Shelter, is called to pick up an estray or a large animal that has been found on a county road that needs to be picked up and brought into the shelter, those animals, they try to find the owners within, I think, 18 days. And they recently had, I believe, four donkeys, is that right? You had four mules or donkeys, and they were so cute, I saw them in the paper. Anyway, the owner has, I think, 18 days. They try to find the owners best they can. If they can't find the owner, then the animals are sent to the auction, which is, I believe, in Gillespie County, and then these animals are sold. And the money goes, for these animals, goes in the general county fund of Kerr County and not to the Animal Services Division. That doesn't sound right to me. If y'all fed and housed and took care of these animals, when it goes to the auction, you should have the money. You should have the money to run the shelter. Other than that, everybody's has already said everything that I wanted to say, and I thank you for the time that you gave us.
Kelly Dooley.
Hello, I'm Kelly Dooley, and I live in Ingram. I'm an animal lover, but whether we are or not in love with animals, I do think it's our duty to take care of the animals. And these are mostly domesticated, defenseless animals that are in, in the care of the county. And even though it may not be a requirement of the county to care for and adopt out and so forth, these animals, I still think it's our duty, and I think that that's fallen into our hands, and that's where, what we need to do. It's very obvious there's a problem, or we wouldn't be here, and there wouldn't be so many people talking. It's very obvious that the, that the facility needs to be open on Saturdays for all the reasons that have already been given. I don't think that euthanasia is the answer, period. While they have come up with a lot of ways to keep us from getting into this position, here we are. We're in this position for now. And, you know, I'm in real estate, and a lot of the people that come here from other areas of Texas tell me on a regular basis, I haven't sat down and done a study or anything, but that our property taxes are very high compared with other areas. So in my opinion, we should have a state-of-the-art facility for animals. So, you know, in business, if something's not working, you look at the people there and what they're doing. I assume that's already been done. I'm assuming that because we're here. So I'm thinking, and I've heard good things about all these people, so I'm assuming that everybody here is doing their job and doing the best that they can. So it sounds to me like more money needs to be allocated to this particular part of the county, and it's obvious that we need more people there. The two times since I lived, since I moved here in '99, that I've had to call animal services to come pick up an animal that's running around in traffic, and I'm standing on the side of the road in cold or rain or whatever, holding on to the collar of an animal, the two times I've called, I've been told that it was going to take one to two hours for somebody to come and get that animal. That's not acceptable. So if everybody's doing their job, and I'm believing it, I'm believing in you. I'm believing that you are. We obviously need at least one or two more people there. While every single department in the county can say that they're understaffed, this part obviously involves lives. And for me, those lives of the animals are just as important as people's. They were created by God. They're a gift from God, and I don't believe that we need to ignore them or put them to death because people have put them, have thrown them away. I'd really appreciate it if the county leaders would listen to the people of the county, take better care of the animals, don't use euthanasia, and give us the proper resources to do what we need to do. Thank you.
I'm Lacey Teal. I'm a resident, taxpayer, registered voter, and animal advocate of Kerr County in Precinct Two. I foster, transport, rescue dogs in particular, and have for many years. I have pulled dogs from all over South Texas for various local, state, and out-of-state rescues. I volunteered my time and energy for the Humane Society of Southwest Missouri when I lived there several years ago. Unlike the impression left by Director Given, rescues and fosters also work full-time jobs and require Saturday hours of operation in order to save dogs and cats. Many of us work multiple jobs for holding down households regardless of the opinion of a shelter director or the commissioner's court. Many residents also work nine-to-five, Monday through Friday. The hours and days of the current schedule for KCAS only benefits KCAS employees and not potential adopters, rescues, fosters, or taxpayers of this county, and certainly not the animals of Kerr County. The current schedule is confusing and ever-changing. You could feasibly close on Sundays and Mondays for the benefit of the staff so they have two days off in a row, and the needs of the community. All of my years of volunteering for shelters, volunteer fire departments, local cleanup efforts, et cetera, I have never seen anything more confusing and thoughtless as the volunteer parameters and the new guidelines as I have for KCAS, ever. I will also add, making a decision as important as this one for your constituents and the animals of this county based on an erroneous and illogical report is reckless. Surely, all of you men who sit before us, and women, with your superior education and credentials, would know simple statistical methods and basic math. Did any of you question how these numbers presented were acquired? Did any of you take into account two hours on Saturday compared to nine hours or seven hours on any other day of the week? Or were you hoping that we were all as uneducated, ill-informed as you all think we are? I expect the employees of my local animal control to be compassionate, competent, and driven to a positive outcomes for the animals of Kerr County. Not selfish and entitled to my tax money for a lifetime while adoptable animals die. I have be, if I behaved or performed like some at KCAS, and most of you are very nice, by the way, I want you to know, but there's a couple that I have problems with, I would not have a job. I should not expect anything less from county employees where my tax dollars go. I expect to have, I mean, you have people here who have requested reports, who have requested for policies and procedures. Have they gotten them? Have they received them? Probably not. Why not? We all pay for this service. Thank you.
I'm having trouble reading this name, but whoever lives at 322 Guadalupe Street, can you help me with that? Sorry. Is it Young? Good. I apologize.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've emailed each one of you gentlemen regarding the closure of KCAS on Saturdays.
Can I get your name? I'm sorry.
Michelle Yanez, 322 Guadalupe Street.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to thank Commissioner Letts for not only responding to my email, but for also taking the time to meet with me in person. I'm here tonight to address the Saturday closures. I am a teacher at Tybee High School and was approached by a few of our students to try to revamp the Bark in the Park program that Ms. Berniston mentioned earlier that existed three years ago. When the program was in place, it did give students the ability to volunteer on Saturdays with the animals at the shelter. It also allowed students to take animals to the local parks and walk the pups and socialize them and increase the awareness so that the animals would be highly visible to the public. The city of Kerrville is a perfect example of a community that thrives on volunteerism. We're home to many nonprofits and 501(c)(3) organizations, so it should not be any surprise to see so many of our own students and school organizations with hundreds of volunteer hours attached to their name. But completely closing the shelter on Saturdays totally eliminates the possibility of any student with a busy schedule during the week to go out and volunteer at the shelter on Saturdays. Most students participate in some kind of extracurricular activity, whether it be a sport or participation in band or other fine arts, and these sports and organizations usually hold practice until well after 5:30. I'm here to ask you to just reconsider opening on Saturdays so that young adults who are passionate about working with animals can have that opportunity to contribute their time and their talent to this community and to an organization that gives them a sense of purpose. Thank you.
Pass. Allison Boucher.
Well, she's coming up. Is everybody comfortable in here? Is it cold, hot? Okay. It's freezing. Jake, it's freezing. Come on, Jake, along. Come on.
Good evening. My name is Allison Boucher, and I live at 424 West Crest Drive. I'm a native of the Hill Country, and I started volunteering at the animal shelter with Kerrville Junior Service Guild when they voted to add the county shelter to its service areas in the fall of 2018. Service Guild is how I first fell in love with volunteering there. The fact that two outcomes that affect the public and Kerr County's animals occurred during executive session, both the closure of the shelter's hours on Saturdays and the fact that volunteers must sign up nowadays in advance, only hurt the animals in the long run. The press release the county issued on this matter spun this as a very positive win-win for everyone, and the stories keep changing about why the shelter was closed and why this happened, including stories we heard tonight. I for one am someone who will never be able to volunteer now at the shelter. I work eight-to-five Monday through Friday, as does a majority of the public. Extending your hours until 6:00 PM a few evenings a week does not do anything to help with that. I simply will not have any time to volunteer there now. This does not increase public access when you're extending hours that are inconvenient for your working-class citizens. It does, in fact, the opposite. You're closing on the most accessible day for the public. Opening on Saturdays in just two hours, I don't feel like was asking a lot, and it was a huge step in the right direction, and it showed. For the first time in a decade, Kerr County Animal Control Shelter was completely empty of dogs. Your Facebook page posted this to the public on February 12th this year. Something has been working that's made things like this possible at our shelter, and I know it was the volunteers. I do not accept this statement that you tried on Saturdays and it wasn't working. I also feel the data is skewed in regards to your adoptions, as Mr. Sandy pointed out tonight. The shelter will lose important volunteers and the right audience for animal adoptions. Kerr County is taking a huge step backward in the work that's been done to lower euthanization rates. It's very important for the animals' morale and overall being to be exercised and have human affection shown to them. Volunteers have the ability to do that and are willing to do that. Hours could be adjusted on a different day of the week if this is truly a taxpayer dollars issue. However, reading between the lines, it seems the county wants to operate without the public involved in the control of our animals, and you're shutting us out. Look at this room tonight. The public is asking for more than the state-mandated minimum that you're trying to do. We pay your salaries, and we expect more than the minimum. And transparency. It's possible in other counties like our neighbors, Kendall, who Charity Barnes is here tonight, to do the same and welcome your volunteers and not view them as a burden. I know the staff cares. I've seen it firsthand. I know several of you guys. Let's please work together, and don't shut out the volunteers who care, and show the Kerrville kindness we've all been talking about. Thank you for serving Kerr County in one of the hardest jobs I could ever possibly imagine, and let's just work together, and don't shut us out, please. Thank you for your time.
Cecilia Peterson.
Hello. My name is Cecilia Peterson. I've lived in Kerrville since 2015, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate KCAS and all your efforts that you have done to help these animals, but this is a really big problem, and it's not only this entity. This is a community problem, people. I have four strays that I have took in from my home because I had a lady across the street that had 20 cats. It's bullshit. I'm sorry. So, y'all are saying that you have a lot of surrendering. Okay. Don't surrender. Being a responsible pet owner is for life! For life! I have a dog that's 17 years old, and he will be with me until the day that he dies. I am not surrendering him. About the staffing issues that y'all have, well, with all our high-paying taxes that we pay here in this town, why can't y'all have a few jobs? I'm trying to look for a part-time job in this town, and I can't find one. I love animals. Y'all have a job? I'm willing to go there. The three-day waiting period for these people that give their time to volunteer is ridiculous. Something needs to change. You have people that want to help. We're trying to help as a community here, to come together. And we also need more resources and flyers to educate people on how to keep their animals and be a responsible pet owner so we would not have this problem. Thank you all for what you do. I appreciate it, and I always take care of animals, and I'm willing to do more, so if we need to rally together as a community and start something, I'm willing to do it. Thank you very much.
I just have one more. If anybody else wants to talk, fill the form out and get it to us. Bliss Marsh.
Hi. My name is Bliss Marsh, and I run Blissful Cats Sanctuary here in Kerrville. I'm the wizard behind the Blissful Cats Facebook friends. I would like to come up here and talk about something a little different. Has to do with volunteers, but I wanted to agree with Loving Texas Pet Assistance and Catherine, who came up here and defended you guys. I've worked with you. I've gone in there and seen what a hard job. There's too much to do, and there's not enough people. Every time I walk into the office and I see, and I look back behind the wall, I just want to run back there and do things for you because I've worked in administration for a long part of my life, and it feels like there's not a lot of efficiency back there. There could be a lot less paperwork. There could be a lot more digital efficiency going on. And I've heard that things like that have been offered, and it just hasn't been implemented. Something's going on. I feel like we have a really big volunteer community, like everyone's been saying, that has education for you guys and for the community, because the community is a problem. And I have friends who have pets who have not been fixed, and I scream at them every time. I talk to them and go, "Did you get so-and-so fixed yet?" "No." Well, that's because there's nowhere under $75 in those places to get your animal fixed, and a lot of people can't afford that. I mean, my friends can't afford it. So, being open, encouraging the vets to have things like what Loving Texas Pet Assistance does, educating the community about getting fixed and getting chipped and rabies vaccinations. And there's people in the community that will volunteer to do that. That's the great thing, is you don't have to hire anybody to do that. All you have to do is, and I know you've got, you know, liability issues, but all you've got to do is really use the resources that are completely free in this community. I work with feral cats every day, and I've done it for 10 years now, and I've become really educated about how to deal with them. I know feral cats is an issue that we have here at Animal Services. I am the one that gets called when there are scary kitties that could possibly be socialized, but nobody knows how to handle them. And I am like, "Let me teach them. Let me educate people." And there's just no outlet for that. But I am so willing to offer my free time. Don't pay me anything. I will, you know, you have a free resource, and I'm sure you have a free resource than a lot of other people here, too. Please let me educate, you know. The guys, I love you guys. Everybody loves Nicole. Everyone that works with Nicole loves Nicole. And she does her job with such grace. She's so gracious when she thanks you for doing something, and she doesn't ever seem to let it get to her. And so, we love her, and I haven't met the ACO officers, but the guys that work there, I love them, too, but I have seen behavior that I go, "What are you doing?" You know? A guy was trying to reach into a trap and pull out a scared, possibly feral cat. You don't do that, or you get scratched, or you get bit, and then there's all the paperwork that goes with that. So, I feel like there's a lot of education that they could have, too. And the last couple of things I want to say is, one, with the cats, we are saturated in this county, this year at least. It has not been this bad since I started my sanctuary. And so, getting the education to the community is highest priority, because what are they doing? You know, they can have seven to 10 cats a litter, and then they're all coming to you guys. And then, they're coming to me, and I'm full, and Callo's full, and Freeman Fritz is full, and everybody is full. Now, I get that you don't want to be an adoption center, and that's not what the law is calling you to do, but the citizens of this county obviously want you to be an adoption center. The other thing I would like to point out, and community, this is on you, too, is these meetings that I go to and the advocates that I talk to in this county, in this town, are 95% women. And if you look at this table up here, there's only two. And that's partly on the community. Somebody needs to run if they, if we need, we want, we want, you know, to be two guys, two girls. I think that would be pretty equitable at this point. So, I am glad that you have these meetings. I really, really hope that you listen and listen to the numbers, and don't just listen to the emotion, because I know this is business, and you've got to deal with finances, but money isn't the only thing that works here. You've got a lot of other resources at hand that are being offered to you. You've just got to use them, or there's going to be a tidal wave, and you're going to either lose your job or be very unhappy doing it. So, but thank you, and thank you for doing everything that you do.
We still have speakers? We still have speakers? You can talk to us. Next speaker is, okay. Let's get back on the agenda. The next speaker is Jay Hollis. Did I say that right?
All right. Harley, I know. He knows I'm a straight shooter calling into his radio show when he was at the Rev. Now, I looked at all your fancy graphs and numbers and whatever you threw up there. You came up with this 200-hour thing. Is that maximum or minimum that the law allows? And if so, why couldn't hours be staggered for your employees that they overlap each other to make time that the shelter is open longer and on Saturdays? I would think that would be simple mathematics. Now, I could be wrong about that. You know, I don't know how it's structured now, so I'm just giving my suggestions on maybe something that can be done. Maybe y'all are already doing that. I don't know. Now, one quick little story. I have a dog now. I found it wandering around one of the properties that I do work for. I heard horrible things about the shelter. Her life expectancy was three to five days if she went in there. At the time, I didn't realize that Freeman Fritz or the Humane Society would take a little dog, especially a cute one like mine, and get it out of there. But she was a little Houdini. She got out. She pulled off a leash once. She broke a clip off a chain once, and a couple of these people almost know me by name from going in there. I would have to miss a little bit of work, go in late one day, get off early the next day, and Saturdays were a big day for me. So, to have the shelter be closed on Saturdays makes absolutely no sense. That would be the most important day of the week for anybody. Now, some of these people, they almost know me by name, because I'd walk in there and they'd say, "No, we haven't seen a dog like yours," because they had her Little Wanted poster hanging up on the wall. So, you know, anybody that says anything bad about these people is wrong to begin with. I mean, it's nice we have this lady that cares. I mean, at one time, they were taking pictures and posting them on social media of every pet that came in there. I'd run through that website daily. So, you know, for anybody to criticize any one of these people is ridiculous. Thank you for my time.
The last one of these I have, if you want to speak, you still have time to turn one in, but this is Tammy Weaver.
Thank you all very much for everything. Y'all do a great job. I did want to address one thing that, well, I want to ask you all a question. I hope you have heard what we want. We want Saturday hours. It really seems important. A lot of this is going to be funds, funding, and I want to personally thank Sheriff Rusty because he has pulled off a huge coup bringing us Airbnb jail dollars from his infall. He's given us a big windfall, I think. It was $700,000 from your jail that you, man, that's great. So, I mean, we're talking about jails. Attaboy, Rusty. Attaboy. And I know we're not going to pay off the debt, so it is going to be an issue of funds. So, we're going to try and earmark some of those, because that's going to be one answer. We need more manpower, more money. We're just going to have to do it, and we've got the people, I think, that want to say yes to that.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take item two on the agenda, which should have been before the input. That's the commissioner's court consideration of coordinating with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and/or possibly other animal services facilities regarding adoptions, rabies, or other non-mandated functions. Mr. Letts. Mike?
I want to thank everyone for coming, and I know I've met with many, many of you one-on-one, a lot of you in groups. I know I've got a lot of angry people towards me, but I think most people know that I listen, and I try hard, and look at a lot of different considerations. One of the things we're looking at right now is how can a nonprofit help? As you've heard a theme tonight quite a bit, that with the funding that we've been able to allocate this year and in prior years, the adoption side of animal control is difficult for us. We don't have the manpower to do it right now. We can't go mid-year. We cannot do a big budget adjustment. The way we do that's an emergency, and I don't believe the county attorney will allow that. So, this year, we're going to have to live within our budget. But a nonprofit is an option, and I have been talking with several people in the community in the past couple of weeks. There are people that are very anxious to do this. It could come a number of different formats. Go ahead, Bruce. We're not going to spend a lot of time here, but we feel we need to focus on this primarily. Adoptions need to be done, but it's how they get done and what's the most efficient and the best way to have them done. A nonprofit could partner with Kerr County. It's something that we could possibly fund. The city could possibly help fund it. It could form, you know, ideally, in our mind, or my mind, it would be a nonprofit could handle all the adoption rescues. It'd work something along the lines that we would do the animal control portion of it, that we would keep all animals that are surrendered or picked up for the state legal amount of time, and then turn them over to another facility. This is how most communities become no-kill. Very few communities are able to do it through solely a governmental function becoming no-kill. This is what Austin does. This is what a lot of communities do. I hear, I see quite a few people that are real knowledgeable nodding with me. So, that is a good solution in our mind to do it, and we're working with people. I'm working right now with several people in the community on how to set one up, how it could work. The next one. You know, how it exactly is structured is pretty much up to everyone's imagination. I think Phyllis Allen said it best, who's head of Freeman and Fritz, said that it could be any form the public wants, the community wants. It can be a standalone facility, a new facility. It could partner with the current local facility, Freeman and Fritz, the Humane Society. If they had additional funding, they could probably expand their operations. It could be part of an intermediate home foster program. Some communities really enhance the foster, home foster, what do we call it? Home Fit? What do we call it? Family Fit. Something like the Family Fit program, expand that. And it could be whatever the community wants. So, what I hear, and I think everyone on the court and everyone up here agrees, we do have a problem. We would like to focus our efforts more on education, rabies control, animal cruelty cases, things of that nature. We're going to have another meeting at some point, probably right after the first of the year, on feral cats, wild cats. That is a huge problem in this community, and there's a lot of options out there. I have learned far more than I ever thought I would about feral cats in the past year. But it's good. There are things out there. There's lots of different things we can do. But the key is to work together, and that is, I mean, I'm hearing that from a lot of people here, and that's just what we need to do. And even on, I mean, that's where we need to go. Being, kind of standing in opposition to each other is not going to help anything. We need to try to work together. I think, and I know a lot of you disagree with the decisions we made, but I think everyone on the court is willing to listen, and we really appreciate y'all coming. Thank you.
Well, I think we're right about on time.
I have a small little question. I know there's been a lot of people that have been on Saturday. I would love to hear, but I love to see you come here, and I think we'll find out tomorrow. Can you help on Saturday with your dogs? I mean, if you want, are you going to let people just come help on Saturday without finding out who you are?
Our policy will be looked at at some point. And Reagan's right here. He can.
I'm sorry. I can call. I can call. Sign up. Okay. We are here to go and ask for your questions. Okay, so I can just call. Perfect. Thank you.
Do you have a copy of the volunteer policy? Do you have a copy of the policy?
Copy of what?
Copy of our volunteer policy. We have it.
We're going to put it on the website just to make sure everybody has access to it.
Do you have a copy of the policy? Do you have a copy of the policy?
We're going to put it on the website. I didn't know we had a problem with that, but we'll make sure it gets on the website. Okay.
On the volunteer policy issue, when we made the decision, the policy wasn't written. We gave it direction from the court to Reagan, and it took some time to get the policy written. We gave a basic framework, so that's why it's been a little bit of time to get the actual written policy up, but it'll be up as it's finished now, and it will be posted on the website.
Do you have a copy of the policy? Do you have a copy of the policy?
We don't get enough help.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for coming. I know this has been an emotional night for everybody. We welcome this input. We have listened. We hear, and we will try to move forward with this. We'll let you know when we schedule the next workshop, which will probably be sometime after the first of the year. And so, with that, we will stand adjourned.